All right, welcome everybody. And thank you again to the Town of Superior for hosting us as we continue to renovate our boardroom in the Boulder Valley School District Education Room. So I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, August 27th, 2019. Laura, would you please call the room? Benford, Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent. All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a reminder that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. All right, so as we start every meeting, we'll begin with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson.
Board President Marquess, members of the board, welcome to another board meeting. We have had an excellent start to the school year. Was able to visit many of our schools during the first week. We've been dealing with two issues at some of our schools. With the warmer weather, we've been having to really do our best job to mitigate some of the warm classrooms. And Rob and his team have done a great job of getting out and bringing in temporary cooling devices, whether it's swamp coolers, portable AC units, and so we're continuing to work on that. Also have several of our schools where we're continuing to work on class sizes and monitoring those to make sure that we're within our limits. With our shifting population, as we've discussed, where we have certainly in more of our eastern county schools are more crowded and some of our schools in Boulder area less crowded, we are working to continue to mitigate that. We had a great visit from Governor Polis the first week we were here. And on Friday, he visited Columbine Elementary School and thanked the board members that attended. It was a great event, a great opportunity to thank him and celebrate full day K, not just for Boulder Valley Schools but for all of the state of Colorado. I want to welcome back our preschool students who started school this week. We have preschool programs in 20 of our schools and it was nice to have them back. Last week, Tina and I participated in a vaping press conference. I want to again thank the Boulder City Council for taking up this really important issue. This is an issue in our community and it's going to take us all working together to combat it. And just to reiterate, certainly fully support the flavor bans that they're discussing, raising the age limit to 21 and the increased taxes that are proposed. Anything we can do to keep our kids safe. It seems like every day I see another article on kids being hospitalized through vaping and not really knowing what's happening. I know for a fact that kids who start vaping aren't signing up for what they're getting themselves into, life addicted to nicotine and all the health issues. And so I want to thank the Boulder City Council for continuing to take up that issue. On Saturday, I was able to go to an event at CU Boulder with several of our staff to celebrate the Renee Crown Wellness Institute. And board, as you'll remember, this is something that is a partnership that we're going into with CU Boulder. It's an interdisciplinary research-practice partnership that's going to promote not only the wellness of our staff but the young people and the adults that support them and really aligns with our focus around social emotional well-being of our students and staff. And then finally, many of our parents received a letter this week referring to a Pearson-Aimswell 1.0 data breach. Wanted to give some context around that if folks have been hearing about that or if they've received a letter. So Pearson, they're a huge publisher of print and digital textbooks. Experienced a data breach that affected more than 13,000 schools and universities across the country. Across the country, and unfortunately Boulder Valley Schools was one of those school districts. The breach was limited to first and last name and date of birth. So that's the only information that was breached. Pearson is fully cooperating with us. Part of our communications to our parents was in coordination with Pearson who'll be covering the cost of mailing everyone that was impacted or affected, both current and past, parents and students. And right now Pearson does not have any evidence that this information, the first name, last name, and date of birth has been misused. I know that they're working with several agencies to continue that investigation. So we just wanted to make sure that we were being very transparent with our families, with our community. This is something we take seriously as a board. Certainly data privacy has been amongst our legislative platform for a number of years. So it's something that we're taking very seriously. Families that are impacted, Pearson is offering credit monitoring service through Experian. We have more information on our website under current topics. So if folks want to learn more about that, that's where we'll be keeping our most up-to-date information. And if there is more information that comes out on this topic, we'll be sure to make sure that we let the public know. But wanted to end my report, my update on that piece. I know that's something that came out this week and just trying to be as transparent as we can and something that this is something we're taking very seriously.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions for Rob? Sam?
I would just say, board colleagues and Rob, I'd like us to consider holding some kind of public hearing on what happened. That's an option for us, is not?
I believe that that's something that we're talking to, that we're considering that we potentially could do.
Great. And thank you for your, for being public in the board and the district stance on the vaping issue. I really appreciate that and I'm glad we're trying to get out front of that problem.
Any questions for Rob?
Kathy. On the data, as part of the potential public hearing, I think there's lessons we've learned about what data we want to have loaded on the system and what data we might not want to, so maybe we can have some continuing conversation about that as well.
Absolutely.
Donna?
And thank you for giving us an update and I know you'll continue to follow through with parents on the class size issue. Thanks.
Anything else? All right, great. So our next item is public participation. Laura, no public participation today?
We have no one signed up.
Okeydoke. So we'll move right along to board communication. Board members. Anyone? Donna?
I do want to acknowledge Bill and his team, Justin Patron, for their excellent work in receiving the Association of School MBA Business Award, which reflects Boulder Valley's commitment to sound fiscal management and budgetary policies. That's the good news because I'm glad to see that we are following not only policies but we're doing well with the money that our community has entrusted us with. I wanted to say that because it's difficult to hear and for parents to hear some of the bad things happening or the things that are concerning like the Pearson breach. So I wanted to point out that we're doing some really good things and getting awards for those things.
Okay, other board members. All right, yeah, and just Rob, thanks for all your support on the vaping. It was great. And I, you know, I hope we're, the hearing is tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at Boulder City Council where I think they'll be voting, right? And unfortunately, it is back to school night for both Fairview and Boulder High School. So I think some of the Boulder Panthers are going to try to do both. We're going to go for it and hit city council and then race back over to Boulder High and meet some of our kids' teachers. So that's the plan, but it's going to be tight, so.
I do have a question with the vaping tax, if it ever gets through, the proposed vaping tax. Is there any indication at all that you all know where that tax is going to go to if in fact it passes?
Not yet. I don't think we're there yet.
That's why we have a resolution on that to talk about later.
I have some ideas and a lot of them are school-related.
I wonder if it'll go the same as the sugar tax.
Well, that's where I was hoping it would head, somewhere in that direction.
Yeah, that's been a neat funding opportunity.
I did think of something. I also contacted the Superior Town Board as a resident of Superior, asking them to do the same thing we've asked Boulder to do. And it's worth noting, if you hadn't seen a couple, a week or so ago, that there was a death from one of the vaping-related lung diseases. So this is just waiting to happen.
All right, so then next we have our first information item, which is around CMAS results. Jonathan Diggs.
President Marquess, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. I'm here to provide a brief overview of the results for this past year in terms of participation, growth, and achievement. We'll talk a little bit about our overall rating, but then really focus on the data that underlies that and participation, achievement, achievement gaps, growth, as well as our next steps in terms of what BVSD is doing to address persistent achievement gaps. So there are five levels at which the state rates districts. Accredited with distinction, accredited, improvement, priority improvement, and turnaround. This past year, we reached the accredited level near the high end, due in part to changes in the way that that was actually calculated, but reflecting by and large the same level of performance. Digging into that performance level a little bit deeper and meaningfully, is possible over years because of the increases in participation that we've seen. We have very high participation at the elementary level, good participation at the high school, and pretty good participation at the middle level. Because of the success of, we think, our campaign, but more importantly, our community being willing to allow students to test on state testing days, we have with the 2018 data now a basis for measuring progress over time. And we'll do a little comparing of 2019 with that 2018 data. So the big participation change was, came about with the advent of a campaign and an encouragement of people to test. 2016 to 17, you'll see the increase in 2017, the 18 that we saw in actually marginal increase even into 2018, 19 at the middle level. Because of this level of participation, we do have some confidence in the results we have, particularly at the elementary, also at the high school, and to good extent at the middle level. So when we look at the performance that we have, right, we can with good amount of confidence say that BVSD students do outscore the state and the nation by a pretty large margin. On the PSAT and the SAT, that can be measured in terms of how the median or middle performing Boulder Valley student scores. And that would be depending on the test there and the grade level, as comparably to either 73% or 80% of students nationally. When CMAS is used, one of the ways of tracking that data is by the percent of students meeting or exceeding state expectations. Boulder Valley students are consistently at, in the elementary and middle level, about 15 percentage points higher in meeting or exceeding state expectations than what we're seeing statewide. Yet, there remains a significant disparity between overall achievement and that of groups. The groups that we've focused on in this presentation involve students receiving services through special education, those who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, emerging bilinguals, and Latino students. And our wish here is to monitor progress in narrowing gaps. So looking at the data overall in this scale, right, what we can see, and we'll zoom in on these dots in a minute, is that how high the dots are on the vertical axis talks about participation and we see that those figures are really pretty comparable in 2019, which is in the blue, and 2018 in the orange. When we zoom in on this a little bit to see what we have, right, what we see is that there was an overall slight uptick, right, and some uptick in groups, right? Minor movement for emerging bilinguals, a bigger movement in free and reduced lunch, and a bigger movement than that for students served in special education. Now, a challenge we have, both in wanting to celebrate the progress that's made, is to also recognize that the gap we have didn't change a lot, right? The overall results changed a little bit and while we're excited to see movement of any kind, we wish to see bigger movement in the future and particularly bigger movement in terms of the group scores. One of the ways you can measure the kind of movement within a year as opposed to what we're doing here, which is across years from 2018 spring to 2019 spring, is to look at growth data. This summarizes the previous year, 2017-18 growth data. What we see, right, is that the elementary results, which are in circles here, English language arts and math, are above the median statewide in terms of growth, right, and essentially meet or exceed expectations statewide as far as the average score there corresponding to the meets expectations level. At middle level that year, we noticed that the scores in, the growth in English language arts, again in math, weren't quite meeting that median statewide. Looking at the movement, right, what we see is that while we're pleased that middle level made a slight move up, we also saw that elementary made a slight move back. We're looking forward to middle, seeing additional improvement over time. We hope we'll consider to see, continue to see increased participation and that we'll see growth that at least meets, hopefully exceeds, what we're seeing statewide, as we do in the case of elementary. Turning now to high school, there are two kind of different stories of math versus evidence-based reading and writing. And in math, we saw substantial growth on a score that was already really very high. Median growth in Boulder Valley high schools, in mathematics, the middle gaining student in Boulder Valley gained higher than 66% of students statewide. The positive blue colors here are meant very much that way and when we look across groups, right, we see that these were gains across the board and that students in the groups that we would focus on have substantially higher growth than students in that same group statewide. This is all very positive and having this kind of growth contributes to getting ratings that are higher. What we saw in evidence-based reading and writing is a little more complicated in that, for one, the growth that we had, while it was comparable to the growth in 2017, right, and while it stayed particularly comparable at grade 11 on the SAT, we had a substantial falling off at grade 10 from results that were very, very high the year prior, which was a year in which the comparison being made had been from the CMAS at grade 9 to the PSAT at grade 10. So this is a change in what's done. You also notice that at grade 9, right, whereas in math, we'd have seen the ninth-grade box filled in, in grade 9 we don't. There was a change in how CD calculated this and they elected to not use growth from CMAS in grade 8 to the PSAT in grade 9. Focusing though on the results that we do have, combined across grade 11 and grade 10, what we see is that while indeed students in all of the four groups we focus on outgain in many cases by a good margin, the same group of students statewide, the gains we're seeing aren't as basically strong within groups as we're seeing for BVSD overall. We would hope over time to reassert the kind of gains that we saw in past years for all groups of students. And that's the kind of progress that we'll be looking for as we turn to thinking about strategies in which we do this. I know you're about to get a substantial presentation on these strategic initiatives from Dr. Messier. I will mention what they are here by putting them on this slide, but in addition to the substantial reorganization in the current year and some strategies that are being engaged concurrently, we do have some long-term strategies for improving performance over time. So in summary, we're accredited. We have steady participation. We hope to increase that at the middle level even more. We have high achievement, strong growth at the elementary level and especially the high school level, yet significant gaps and a plan to address those gaps. We'll be continuing to encourage participation. I stand ready for your questions.
All right, thank you so much. And this is a great summary of the participation and the achievement in the testing, so thank you. It just seems so clear. Board members, any questions? Kathy?
I just think, it just be that I'm numerically challenged, but I don't, when I look at the slide for high school and language arts, can you explain to me how we call that strong growth when we went down?
So the 60 is what I would call strong by comparison to what we're seeing statewide. What the typical student makes statewide by definition is 50. So our middle gaining student outgained 60% of students statewide.
But when I look at what we did the year before, we went down in almost every category.
Yep.
So I just have a hard time seeing that as strong growth.
It certainly didn't improve. It maintained relatively steadily at grade 11. The big change was at grade 10, where the change in the metric was from CMAS to PSAT for the 17 to 2018 comparison, and PSAT 9 to PSAT 10 for that one. You are absolutely right. This is not an improvement. I wouldn't want to see any more drops of eight points overall. Yet at elementary and middle, we would be super excited to see growth as high as 60. So this is, and across groups, the performance is higher also, though not as high, most notably for English learners and for eligible students.
IEP students.
Compared to what we're seeing statewide, that growth of 49 is 16 points, sorry, 13 points higher.
No, I know, but I'm just looking again at the year before, Jonathan.
Yeah, right, right. No, I agree.
And given kind of the lackluster results from middle school, it seems like our high school has to show even better improvement. Is that to make up maybe some of the things that we're missing in the middle school?
At each level, we would absolutely hope for as much growth as possible. I really do hope we see increased participation at the middle level. And I think that will give us even better reading on growth and particularly if we get to where the expectation for everyone is, you know, and we know there's way to opt out, right, but the expectation is everybody's testing and putting in a good effort and really showing what they know relative to what's on that test. I'm hopeful we'll get a bit more, I hope we'll get better data and I'm hopeful that what we do, we'll see higher growth.
Then just one last question. Were the CMAS 11th grade results so poor because we had such high opt-out because we don't talk about those?
Right. The CMAS for grade 11, times results for the test that was taken by about one in four students, they're mentioned in the long present, so the long paper that you got, about eight pages long. We could do the comparison of what that's like as far as what we're looking at statewide, but I think it's not a real accurate reflection of what we have, even if the number is comparatively positive, as I kind of recall. I can look at.
It seems to show appearance lack of value in that test, which I don't think is unique to Boulder, at least that's my sense, so.
Or Colorado.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Do we pay for that test for all students or just those who take it, or does the state pay for it?
I'm not, I don't believe that the contract statewide, which we aren't paying for, I don't believe that goes down with the number of students taking the test, but I'm not, not, I haven't reviewed that contract structure. But we aren't, we, Boulder Valley, there is no line item that we pay for that testing based on participation and there's no savings.
Okay, just checking.
Dollar cost.
If we're not going to take it, we might as well not pay for it. Any other questions? Richard.
Have you done any kind of analysis on why 2018 was such a, appeared like it was a good year for English learners and FRLs and your minority students? And then, you know, because if you look at the scores in 2017, 2019, they're pretty alike. So is there any explanation on that?
I wouldn't say that I have a good one and it's especially challenging in view of how well things went in math overall, right? I mean, if we turn back to math, this is exactly the kind of gains over time that one hopes for, right? If you get a big jump in one year, you hope to see it sustain over time. And the big jumps in math that we saw in 2018 for each of these groups even improved over time. So as to why we would have results that are not the same and in fact go most of the way back or half of the way back, depending on the level, or about even with 2017, I don't have a good answer on why that would be. I do have some questions about the influence of grade 10, right, since that's overall appears to be where the big change was. So we'll do a little more of analysis on that and if we turn out anything insightful, we'll be happy to pass that on.
Well, it would seem like that would be helpful to whatever strategies we're putting together to decrease that gap. Just saying.
And I'm just adding to Richard's comment. My child is part of that cohort in 1819 that are the first group that went through the math curriculum change. And so I'm curious if that impacted that or if that's just too high a level to think that those could be related. And I would have been surprised because I felt like we saw a dip in growth scores in the elementary level two and three years ago both, but it's interesting to see this growth at the high school level.
I would say, board members, that this is really complicated, right? And I think that in looking at just numbers on a sheet of paper, right, that I think that there's a lot of things that you can speculate about. You know, I think about, gosh, if you made huge growth in one year, then the kids that you're being compared against in growth, right, are at a higher level and it's harder to show growth as you compete against those kids. And this is sometimes why, in my experience, you see some kind of growth go up, down, up, down, and almost cycle in the pattern you'd see there. That's pure speculation. I don't know that that's the truth, that is actually true or not. What I do know is that as we think about it and reflect upon our practices and we think about how our strategy, which Dr. Messier will be speaking to in a moment, we need to have consistent standards of what we're trying to do. And I would say that from school to school, as we think about today, especially around our curriculum and the standards that teachers are teaching, that there isn't necessarily a prioritized list of standards that is universal from teacher to teacher, school to school. And so as you start to think about performance, absent of that, it becomes tough sometimes, I think, to make some of these generalizations. And so what I would say is, I'm not okay with these results. I think that all of our subgroups have to make much higher growth if we want to begin to close gaps. And I think that we have to do some of the tough systems work that we did last year, started, that will begin to start this year, to really get the district conditions right to begin to support our teachers, support our schools. I think we've made a lot of changes over the course of the past year to get us in that place where we then can expect above-average growth for all of our subgroups year in and year out. That's the only way we'll close gaps. And as you all know, that's a priority of this board. It's a personal mission of mine, as long as I've been an educator, to make sure that every kid has every opportunity in schools and that we close those gaps to make sure that that happens. And so I appreciate Jonathan's excellent presentation of this data and he's always very smart and careful not to make any judgments or speculations in analyzing what can be really complicated that's boiled down to a few numbers. But please know that I am proud of our performances, but also we have a lot of work to do.
Kathy?
Well, I appreciate that, Rob, because I think this just shines a light on why it's problematic to have an accountability system that's so driven just by single numbers.
That's right.
Katie?
Yeah, so what are we doing differently to?
Yeah, so what are we doing differently to help the kids who are not growing as quickly as they should in closing the gap?
It's a great segue to our strategic plan presentation, if you, if, if there's no more questions.
Nicely done, Kitty. Okay. Next, next item. Our next information item is the strategic plan update.
As they're getting ready, I will just point out one other data point. You know, I, I looked at, I had a chance to sit down with some of the, the district performance frameworks this year. Last year, we were, we had the twenty-third highest score in the state, and this year, we had the twenty-fifth highest score. And so, while we went from distinction to accreditation at the state level, we went from twenty-five schools with distinction to eighteen. And so, if you were to kind of compare us where we were last year, kind of in the pack, very similar.
Twenty-five, who's ahead of us?
A lot of really small districts that look nothing like us.
How do we escape out? Or is there a way to make the screen small again from the?
The. Well, resource. We don't even have kids for subgroups.
Flash drive up there? So, how do you?
I don't know. It's, it's hard, trust me. It's hard.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ask the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Have you got it?
I think we are in the darkness.
We look good.
On September.
Yeah, I have no idea where.
Okay, so.
Something's abandoned.
Escape.
There you go.
The keyboard is turned off.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
And then, how do I?
This one?
You all were?
No, I wasn't.
No kidding, right?
And I think it has to be our basic decision.
Should be a.
None of that.
Okay, because I'm saying they're not that pretty, but that's good to have something to put on. Don't make warheads.
This is.
Thank you for your patience. Okay, great. Thank you for your patience, board members. And it's a pleasure tonight to present to you an update on the strategic plan work. So, first, some words of acknowledgement. There were some action team members and action team leaders that worked very, very hard over the summer to produce these action plans on a really short timeline. And I really want to acknowledge them for that work and all the effort that they put into this. Also, special acknowledgement to Aubrey Yeh, our coordinator for language arts and humanities in the East Network, and Carolyn Nowey, who's the communication specialist who supports all three networks, who played a, a big role in supporting the teams to ensure that they were able to meet this really tight timeline. Oops. Oh, that wasn't what I wanted to do. What happened? This is like a totally different view than we had before. We're here for. In read mode, okay. One's on the side. Okay, do that. Okay. All right. Okay. Try number two. So, this is just an overview to remind everyone of the process that we've gone through for this strategic plan up to this point. If you'll remember, we started phase one back in December, when we engaged the Greenway Strategy Group to do a very thorough review of our data and the environmental and organizational trends that they were able to uncover. Based on that, teams developed long-term outcomes and strategic themes. That's also when we did several stakeholder engagement sessions to get some public input on the development of those outcomes and themes. And then, we designated some strategy teams to really take those themes and build those out into what our intended objectives are, some possible measures, and what specific initiatives might be that would help us achieve our long-term outcomes. And then, the work over the summer, which really took place between May and the end of August, was to determine the phasing and identify who the sponsors and owners of these initiatives would be, have the teams really create those action plans for the phase-one initiatives. And now, we're right where that blue triangle is in starting to think about developing monitoring processes. Just a reminder, action plans, the role that they play in the strategic plan, they're part of the methods. So, initiatives really define the big significant areas of work that we're going to try to accomplish, and the action plans are how to actually get that work done. This is the very high-level overview of the strategic plan summarized in one page. You can see our long-term student outcomes at the top. All students benefit from challenging and relevant educational opportunities to reduce disparities in achievement and to ensure that every student graduates empowered with the skills necessary for postgraduate success. Everything else in the strategic plan is intended to point towards those outcomes and help achieve that for our district. It's divided into four themes, and under those themes are multiple objectives, and then a variety of specific initiatives. Here, you'll see that the phase-one initiatives are in bold. Those were ones that were selected to go in phase one, not because of importance, but because it's dictated by sequence. So, there are certain things that have to go before other things in order for the work to, to happen in the sequence that's necessary. For example, creating a standards-based scope and sequence and defining common-aligned instructional practices. That work and definition has to happen before we design support systems to maximize, maximize our administrators' instructional leadership, because that scope and sequence and those instructional practices become some of the content for developing administrators' leadership capacity. These are the phase-one initiatives in list form, and then I will be going through them one by one. Before we get there, I just want to give you a little bit of a high-level overview of the timeline to accomplish these things. So, you'll see up at the top, the dark blue initiatives are in phase one, the medium-colored blue are the ones that'll be tackled in phase two, and then the light blue tackled in phase three. You will, however, notice that phase three begins in May of two thousand twenty-one, so there's not a, a long time elapsed before we begin the phase-three initiatives. There's a lot of compression of all of these early on in the process. Okay, so some detail on each of those specific initiatives. Initiative one A, to create a standards-based scope and sequence for pre-K-12. I, I would emphasize that when we say create a standards-based scope and sequence, we don't mean a day-by-day read-from-the-script curriculum. What we're talking about is simply defining which standards are the most important and what's the best sequence in which to teach them. So, defining the priorities really help us define scope, and sequence is about the order in which we address them. Why is that important? One of the things that emerged in the research as our team underwent this, the work on defining what initiatives would help us accomplish those outcomes, is that if we really want to achieve our goal of reducing disparities in achievement, creating a scope and sequence that's aligned to standards is one of the most important and impactful strategies that we can undertake to accomplish that goal. So, we feel like it's, it's critical, it's central to the work that we're going to need to do to move this forward. The reason that is, is that it helps create that consistency of experience for students across the district and that coherence, both vertically and horizontally, for students throughout our system. In terms of how that work is going to unfold, this year is really about doing the work of prioritizing the standards, and I'll, I'll address that in a lot more depth in a later presentation when we talk about the new state standards. And then, moving next year into sequencing those standards and then into the development of some professional learning on how to enact those. One B, this initiative is really about instructional practices. We have a lot of strong instructional practices in our district. The intent of this initiative is to really create a common framework, a common model, that helps unify the approaches of all teachers around one common set of instructional practices in one way of talking about it. So, that sort of becomes the, the flag that we rally around in terms of our instructional practices. Instruction is the critical piece of translating that scope and sequence into the learning experiences that students are going to have. If we're really going to ensure that all students have access to meaningful and engaging opportunities, it's the instructional practices that are going to help us get there. So, the work for this year is to do really a deep dive into the research on instructional practices and what we know about the impact of those on student learning, and then begin designing the framework and integrating that into our curriculum, and then working towards implementation the following year. Initiative three A, create a tiered system of school requirements, supports, and accountability metrics which drive the allocation of resources. So, this is an initiative that Robin Fernandez, our area superintendent for the East Network, has been leading up with the rest of the executive leadership team to come up with a framework for how we ensure that we're not trying to apply the same rules to every school, but that we're differentiating support to schools. One of the themes that Dr. Anderson has repeated, I think since he arrived here, is this idea that one size does not fit all. That goes for students as well as schools, and this strategy will really help us customize and provide more flexibility for schools based on their performance. We're working on developing that framework right now, and then I'll be taking it out for feedback. Three C, to create a system to monitor and assess academic return on investment for current and future programs. So, if you'll remember, last year, one of the things that we undertook was an initiative inventory, which was really the first step along the road to beginning to use this concept of academic return on investment to help us make critical decisions about what work to continue, what work to stop, what work to refine and revise. This is going to be critical to us if we're going to take seriously our charge to take some of the things off the plates of schools so that they can find focus. So, we see this, this initiative as critical to that. Within that, beget, being able to assess return on investment is going to require us to do a better job of studying implementation. It's hard to know how effective a strategy is if we don't know how well we've implemented it. And so, Dr. Dean, Dr. Dings and his team have been doing some really great work, looking at the implementation of our literacy materials adoption that began last year, and that work will continue this year so that we're able to do a better analysis of that program's impact. Five A is about establishing a system for strategically managing our existing partnerships and building new partnerships. We're incredibly fortunate in the Boulder Valley School District to have access to a large number of organizations that are eager to part with, partner with us and provide a lot of resources to us. A challenge for us has been to ensure that those partnerships are equitably distributed and that all of our schools have a way of accessing partners that can really help them. Another challenge has been to ensure that all of our partners are really aligning their work to those long-term outcomes that we're trying to achieve. And so, we see this as critical to helping us accomplish a lot of the other initiatives that are folded into the strategic plan. You'll see that part of this is to develop a job description for a partnership coordinator, which is certainly something that would have to come back to this board during the budget cycle if we decide to go forward with that. Six A, so this initiative, define and put into practice culturally responsive principles and best practices that challenge inequity and bias, is at the heart of the work that we're trying to accomplish with the strategic plan. Equity is a strong commitment of this district. I know it's a high priority for the board, it's a high priority for Dr. Anderson, it's a high priority for all of senior leadership. We struggled with deciding whether to call this out as its own initiative, the danger being that that starts to live separate from and detached from the other work, because truly, the equity work should be infused within all of the work and all of the strategic themes. And that's our intent, is that we feel like it's important to call it out and ensure that it happens and hold ourselves accountable through the timeline that provides some structure and discipline and transparency to ensure that we get the work done. So, you'll notice that this is the one where we, we actually have one box checked on our timeline. We have already provided. We have already provided PD and bullying prevention in response for more than 300 secondary teachers. It was an incredible professional learning session at the beginning of the year. It was delivered by one of our students, who did just a phenomenal presentation about the importance of responding professionally when bullying occurs. You'll see that this year, we're really committed to doing a lot of work at the system level, like reviewing our discipline practices, reviewing our culturally responsive hiring practices, looking at our bullying policy, and really developing a strong framework for culturally responsive practices and principles. Next steps is to assemble the implementation teams that will carry this work out, as well as advisory teams that will help provide them with some feedback and input along the way. We'll also be developing a process to monitor this implementation, and probably the most exciting part is to actually start the work and begin building some of these things that I think will help us accomplish those long-term outcomes. Our next update to the board will be September 17th, when you'll hear more about the strategic plan metrics from Dr. Dings. And with that, I will take any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Board members, Richard?
That's a lot of work. Thank you, Dr. Dings. Wow. If you go to 6A, "Define and put into practice culturally responsive principles", on the timeline, you have district-wide bullying policy. Is there a specific month about 2019?
I don't know that we've defined that yet unless our legal counsel has that in the policy plan.
We do not have that assigned to us.
Sometime this year.
I would say that we are going to be bringing frequent updates to the board and communicating. We tried to create a template that was easy for people to read and understand and understand the work we were taking on and not get buried into when things, you know, were going to be accomplished. And we will continue to use these slides, and so you'll be able to track our progress as a board as we move through the year on how we're doing around the checks. I think, you know, the bullying policy is one where it kind of overlaps with our policy review cycle, but this is meant to be a document that really, where not only the board, but the community can hold us accountable. The downfall of strategic plans is they never get done, right? That people come up with a bunch of really great ambitious ideas, and they never have a plan to implement or the discipline to execute. And so that's where this plan is going to be significantly different. We have an incredible team that's committed to this work, that has bought into this work, and as you all, as a board, hold me accountable to get this done. I mean, we're holding each other accountable to make sure we push this work forward, because we believe in what this plan is going to do for the students in our district.
The reason I was asking about that one is that there have been a number of instances around bullying. At least, parents are bringing instances that they perceive as bullying. And they've also checked out if we have a bullying policy and we don't have one. There's embedded language around bullying in some of the other policies. So I guess what I'd like to ask is, what do you do in the meantime until something like that does happen?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think that we need to do a lot of research about really assessing our current state, about how we're dealing with bullying, and also researching the practices that other districts have implemented, best practices, so that we can ensure that however we move forward, that we're aligned with what research tells us are best practices in that field.
And if I can, we will talk about Policy AC in our study at this meeting, and that policy does specifically address harassment that would occur on the basis of race, national origin. So when we look at bullying on those protected classes, we do have that detailed procedure in AC.
Other questions?
Sam, is that student presentation on bullying you mentioned available for us to see?
That's a great question. I will look into that. I'm not sure, but I know who to talk to.
Great.
Kathy?
And is it too soon, Rob, to ask about any details on this? Like, I have a lot of questions around 5. Like, what would full implementation look like? And what are the types of partnerships? So when will we get more detail on this? Because that's all this year. This is going to be a busy year.
It is going to be a busy year. As we get our action implementation teams together and they get more detailed plans, we'll be sharing that with you all as a board. And so as the year evolves, once we get those teams established, we'll be providing updates on where those things are.
So the answer is yes, it's too soon to ask, pretty much.
Right now, yeah.
We do have a very detailed action plan blueprint that goes with each of these. So there's a 20-page document that goes into a lot more detail that I would be happy to share with the board.
That'd be great.
So staying on 5A, I see that you have RFP for partnership management systems. RFP request for proposal?
Correct. So essentially going out to bid to look for a software solution that would help us manage partnerships.
I had a question with, going back to the equity, the 6A. One of the barriers I see to participation for some families, which is more structural, is that we still can't provide childcare at the district where we hold our DAC meetings and our board meetings. Do we think that, or do we think that we can offer childcare there now? As we do for a SAC meeting or a PTO meeting, which we routinely provide in our schools?
I think that's something we'd have to look into. And as we get input from our advisory groups, you know, to really assess the level to which that's a barrier. But if it is a barrier, certainly we can do that.
Okay.
And I had a question, but I realized it's going to be answered at the next board meeting on the metrics part of it somehow.
Great.
Anything else, board members?
Just going back to 5A again, because when I saw RFP for partnership, I got a little bit excited. If it's only for a management system, then I'm not too excited.
I can understand that.
Yeah, because I thought maybe RFP for community organizations to come in.
That's probably further down along in the process. So I think that as we start to define the types of BVSD partnerships, begin to build out this partnership management system, then we'll be able to identify gaps that we might have between our needs for partners and the partners that we actually have that we're tapping into. But that management system is actually an essential component of doing that analysis of understanding which partners we have, what they're doing for us, and what needs we might have that aren't being met.
Just if I could make a couple of comments. Board members, as you can see, our team has been hard at work. We have an ambitious plan. This is a plan that is driven to create the right conditions to get results. Sequencing is going to be critical. And I know that many of us are impatient. We want to be better today, and so do I. But the way that organizations work, the way the huge systems work, it will take some time. Also, as we think as a governance team about balancing what it is we're trying to accomplish, I just want to remind all of us how much bandwidth that this work will take and that this has to be a priority for us as a team if we're serious about getting the outcomes that we want to get for kids. And so I appreciate your support, great questions. Our team has done an incredible job. I am so excited about this plan and what it can do for our kids and for our system, for our teachers, for our community. I have the utmost confidence this is going to make a significant difference, and we're prepared to be held accountable by you all and the public on both the execution of this plan and its success.
It is exciting. You wouldn't get it by this meeting, but it is really exciting. And I know we all anticipate all the good things that are going to come out of the plan. All right, we are going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for action items. Our next item is number seven, action items, consent grouping. 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, August 13th, 2019, regular meeting. 7.3 Acceptance of Donation, Birch Elementary. 7.4 Acceptance of Donation, Broomfield High School. 7.5 Acceptance of Donation, Crestview Elementary. 7.6 Acceptance of Donation, Whittier Elementary. 7.7 Ratification of Negotiated Agreement Between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Classified Association Affiliated with the Colorado Education Association and the National Education Association, BBCA. 7.8 Ratification of Negotiated Agreement Between Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Para-Educator Association. 7.9 Grant Career and Technical Education, Carl Perkins Vocational Technical Grant, Colorado Community Colleges, 19. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Kitty Second. Richard, thank you. Any items anyone would like to pull? All right, any questions about any of the items on the consent agenda? All right, Laura, would you please call the role to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Benford is not present. Fuqua? Fuqua's not present.
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquist?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item, eight action items, are the CASB resolutions. And so we started talking about this at our last meeting. And again, this is the process by which we can give input into the larger CASB community about items that we would want all of the school boards to come together with and advocate for at a state level. So the way this process works, and Kathy clarified this for me today, this is an important point, is that we will give this feedback to the CASB Executive Committee and their language drafters. And then this language is going to come back to us before it is firm and in the CASB Resolution booklet that is then used at the CASB Delegate Assembly. And the reason I say this is that we don't have to be overly concerned with wordsmithing or this, and this isn't the last moment. We still have a chance to actually say, you know what? I thought about this for a couple of weeks, and we'll hear the first one is, "I don't support vaping", or whatever. So I just wanted to add that in case anyone had any questions about the process here. So Kathy, you want to add something?
Well, I suppose technically that's true. I've never known a school district to submit something and then change their mind and say, on second thought, we don't like it. So what will happen is that it goes to the legislative resolutions committee, but first it goes to council to look at it to make sure they kind of tweak it like you were saying. Then the LRC looks at it, decides what they want to do with it. Then, but in that process, they'll come back to the district and say, well, would you be willing to change this word or that word because it doesn't make sense? Or maybe three districts submit something that's similar, so would you be willing to consolidate it with another district? So there's a little bit of negotiation that still goes on before it goes in the booklet. Is that accurate, Kathleen? Kathleen used to do all this work at CASB.
That's amazing.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
It's very intimidating trying to lead this discussion with you and Kathleen here.
You did a great job.
Thank you, I'm trying. All right, so we have an attachment here, which has... So there are two things in the board doc. So first is in the description, we listed five ideas that we had from last time, and these are on your computer. And then, and then I think Kathy provided... Was it Kathy or Kathleen? Who provided the information in the doc that's attached?
Kathy.
Kathy. Nope, this is the doc that's attached on your computer. So, and then just to note that one of the items in the bulleted list on the computer screen is the same as one of them in the attachment, all right? So with that being said, I thought we would take these one at a time and then just kind of do a nod aheads that we want to continue and pass these along to the committees that Kathy just described. So does that sound okay with everyone? All right, so the first one is an administrative audit at state level. And again, I'm not entirely sure what this entails, but this was one where it felt like there's a lot of paperwork that might be dissuading some people from staying in the profession of education. And I didn't know if it made sense for the state to see if there's a way to minimize paperwork and administrative work, so... And Rob, I don't know if you thought about this, if this is a real concern or backburnery?
I think anything that we can do to examine the conditions that we put our administrators and our teachers in is worthwhile.
Okay. So do you all think we should throw this one out there, or what do you think?
Could you explain exactly what that would entail? Just auditing what it is?
So the idea at the end of the day would be to reduce the amount of administrative work an educator and administrator performs. It's a little bit, I'm throwing darts a little bit, but it's what I've heard about the reasons why educators, some educators are leaving the profession. And that's the only impetus for this. Okay. Kathy, do you have any comments on that?
As I talked about before, there is an old document that CASE has that identifies all of the regulations. And at a meeting I was at yesterday, they're talking about dusting that off. So this is something that has some legs. So I think it's important to talk about, I do, and to have the legislature think about it, so...
Donna, what do you think? Okay. All right, well, should we just see where this one goes? And then we'll take a look back? Okay, great. The next is standard of review of charter schools. This bullet point is also in the attachment that Kathy wrote. So Kathy, do you want to read and explain where you're headed here?
So here's the way the resolution reads. "CASB supports legislation that would honor local control and charter school approval and renewal decisions. We propose to change the standard of review for charter appeals to the State Board of Education from State Board's determination of best interests of the district to a State Board standard that would be based on whether local board decisions are arbitrary and capricious, consistent with other administrative appeals processes." So it's trying to be consistent with other administrative practices across the state when there's a board that makes a decision and it's appealed to the district court, which is kind of the same as appealing it to the state board, that they can only reverse that decision if it's arbitrary and capricious. And as we've seen, sometimes the state board... I just believe that local boards are in a better position to know what the community is needing and desiring, and to have the state board supplant its opinion as to what's in the best interest of the district, I think we've seen is, can be problematic. So it's an attempt to try to change that standard of review. It still gives the state board the ability to... Let's say we decide we didn't want a charter school because we didn't like somebody who was on their Board of Directors, or we didn't like the direction of it. That would be arbitrary and capricious. We have to follow our own standards, our own policies, our own practices. So I think we are now heading in a really good direction in the way we revised our application and our review process. And if we didn't stick with that, then they appealed us, we would be reversed for being arbitrary and capricious. So it doesn't do away with the review, it just changes the way they can look at it.
All right, board members, how do you feel about this?
I think that it's a really good idea.
Okay. Richard? Donna?
I don't have any comments at this point. I have to really give it some thought.
Okay.
When it went down last time, it seemed to work very well, so I have to process what Kathy said a little more.
Okay. So I think I heard enough for us to move forward, but then we'll have another chance to look at it. All righty, then we have charter schools. "Student selection process needs to be more open and inclusive." Now, is this on the sheet? There we go. All right, Kathy, you wrote this. Okay. Want me to read it?
Sure.
So CASB, this one would read, "CASB supports legislation that would require equal access for all students to attend charter schools. Charter schools must demonstrate that their lotteries and other admission processes are open and non-discriminatory. Charter schools may not at any time require or ask families to submit student performance or IEP data before admissions decisions are made. Preferential admissions should not be allowed based on legacy. Charter schools must also show the capacity of the district, supports the opening of the charter school." And this is one, there's been some data that charter schools serve significantly lower numbers of special education students, and we've heard anecdotally through community members that there's some concern around that in our own community. And the legacy piece was really from a district that I was reading about, a recent legacy preference they gave that included descendants. And I felt like in the spirit of public education, that public education probably shouldn't favor... shouldn't favor grandchildren and for, of graduates. So it just seemed inconsistent with the spirit of public education. Kathy, do I?
No, I think you summarized it. I think that's a fair description.
Okay. So, and we don't allow legacy admissions in our neighborhood schools at this time. So correct me if I'm wrong.
Right. You live in Denver, but you went to Fairview, so your grandchildren can go there.
Correct. And that's not, that's not common, but I just think it's probably not a great idea.
Is it common for our current charter schools?
It's not common. We have a small legacy preference at one charter school. Does, is everyone okay with that?
I didn't know our charter schools currently ask for student performance and IEP data before admission.
So this, so this is a statewide resolution, first of all?
Right. But do?
Do we ask for IEP right now? Is that a no?
We're not supposed to.
I wouldn't think that that.
I believe so, but.
So I was wondering why that is put in there. I mean, I don't know of any school that does, but.
Well, so I guess my response to that would be if they don't, then why would they care if we put that in there? Because I do hear that there are schools, there are ways of asking about it.
It just raises a red flag to people thinking, oh, is that what happens? So that's why I'm asking.
That's a good question. Do you think, I mean, do you feel that it's happening? Yeah.
Anecdotally, I think I've heard things like that.
Yeah. So this would be more of a clarification or reaffirmation, I think. But you're, you're absolutely right that you shouldn't be. Okay. Next, we have expansion of CTE programming to meet needs of today's world. All right, Donna, do you want to?
Well, I had been asked to, to think about us moving in that direction, and I met with some of the CTE people that said they'd like to see something in that area, but Kathy replied to an email and said that it probably wouldn't be an appropriate resolution to, to move on. So I'm okay with, I think as I looked at some of the standing resolutions and I think SR2 and SR9 kind of cover keeping our programming. My, my biggest concern was that many times CTE, even with my own sons, that we're embarrassed about going over there because it seems like a tracking system. And yet they went over there and let them do PhD programs in engineering. I wanted there to be some kind of a.
So sorry.
Oops. Sorry. I'm not going to back up, but I'll speak to everybody out there, but I, I did not want CTE to be looked at as a track that can be taken, that's a lesser path than that college track. So that, that was where I was going with it, but I'm okay with realizing that some of our standing things on academic performance for students and local governance kind of cover that.
Okay. It's a good point, though.
Yeah, I totally agree with what you say, Donna. I just was having a hard time figuring out if there was a specific request of the legislature. And so that's why I suggested if we wanted to strengthen the standing resolutions or something, because I agree that it's still seen as kind of a lesser track or a, it shouldn't even be a track, it should just be an option for students to be able to take CTE classes to enrich their education, so. So if you wanted to add some language to a standing resolution to strengthen that.
No, it was just a request that came from some of the folks I'm in contact with at CTE, like we, we need to look into this. So it was a way to try to get us to pay attention to that request and that need. I think we can do it without going this route, and I, I will keep advocating for that as being, CTE is being promoted as an exceptional way to expand in your post-secondary decisions. And like I said, and it's anecdotal, I realize, but my own son, who is Dr. Zach Myers now, started out with his interest in computer science through the Cisco programming or networking. And had it not been for that, but he wouldn't even go and pick up his award because he had to sneak out of Fairview, run over there and come back so that no one would know. I, I just want to say that it, that shouldn't happen.
All right. Thank you. So the last one, this one I threw on there was that all boards, district and charters should post agendas and documents being discussed at a meeting by the start of the meeting. And I meant to put in online, I just, I sometimes have a hard time looking at documents from other schools and districts when I'm trying to look at best practices or see, okay, how are they dealing with this contract? And you'll find in the agenda that we discussed this agreement and adopted it, and there's no agreement attached to it. So I think those things are, because it is all public funding, should be available to the public, and they often do deal with how finances are being spent or agreements that are being made and policies that are being adopted. So that would have been, it actually would have been helpful in a couple of instances last year during the charter review, because I was trying to look at other charter schools and seeing what they were doing. And I found it was a little tricky. So that's a personal thing that I found would have been helpful last year. So not an everyday issue. And I, and I don't really know the law so much, I know our own policy. We post our agenda and our documents 72 hours in advance, and we have everything online. It's not necessarily the final document, but that's not a state law, right? That's just our own policy.
That's our own policy.
Right.
That's right. The state law's silent about posting the documents that.
Oh, it is? Yeah, so there's no requirement? So we don't actually have to post this or tape this or anything?
No, you have to post an agenda with as much detail as possible at least 24 hours before the meeting. But there is no state law that speaks to posting of documents that will be reviewed.
Okay.
So we know that they can be corrigable if they're not protected by some other confidentiality provision under the law.
Right.
But we don't have anything specific about making those documents available.
So we actually don't, didn't have to post any of this tonight if we didn't want to?
You would have to post an agenda.
Yeah, just, just the agenda.
As much detail as possible, but you wouldn't have to post the supporting document.
Right. So everything in board docs we didn't technically need except for just the agenda.
Right.
But posting the agenda is part of the state law?
Yes, sir. It's part of the Colorado Open Meetings Law. Well, and I do like.
So are charter schools exempted from that?
They are not, but I don't, I don't think they're bound by the same requirements of Open Meetings Law, but I don't know that in detail.
I support this very much. Maybe we can get somebody to amend that law.
And I do like your thought process on that, Tina, because there was one of our charter schools that I did try to find some information about their agendas and their meeting, and I couldn't. So I, I would appreciate the opportunity to have that available.
I agree too.
I found a friend in the audience. They are in fact.
You only have one call. All year. That's your line, fine.
And what did you say, Kathleen?
And? So they, they are responsible under the Open Meetings Law, but it can get tricky if there's a third-party operator. And I think that that practice in some is just not as well established in jurisdictions where we've got a locally elected court. And what happens if they don't? It could potentially be a violation of the Open Meetings Law. There aren't a lot of consequences. Which could impact their, their. Honestly, the Open Meetings Law, where I've seen it have teeth is when it comes to an executive session. Oh, okay. Or if there's an action taken that wasn't put on agenda, there's some case law out there trying to challenge a particular action that was taken at an improperly noticed meeting, but there's no general sort of enforcement mechanism or implications. Could it impact the renewal of their charter? I guess that would depend on what their contract. Okay. And that was like, that could.
All right. I think that's it. That, that's all we had. So, and then we'll look at it again and, because this is a little bit of a brainstorm that's not, you know, it's.
We have to send this to Casby this week.
Oh, well, then there's that. So do you feel comfortable doing that, Kathy?
So can I work with?
Yeah.
Kathleen, get that sent out?
It's due by Friday. To finalize the others that aren't fleshed out yet. Sure.
And if, and if there's something that just doesn't seem like the information's right, because I, I don't think these were hugely researched, at least.
Some weren't.
Yeah, some were, okay, yours were.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying some more than others.
All right.
So we'll work together and get it submitted.
Yeah.
And then it'll come back to us in mid-September-ish.
And when do we pick our?
LRC meets a week from Friday.
When do we pick our Casby Delegate Assembly?
I have, I'll be there, so the question's whether we want to send two.
Okay, and when do we have to do that by?
Next week, or September 10th, because it has to be submitted by the 24th.
Oh, okay.
So our meeting on the 24th would be too late.
It would, okay, and where is it and when is it?
It's in Breckenridge, the middle of October.
Okay.
Like the 19th, whatever that weekend is.
All right, well, so it sounds like we might be able to send two. So if anyone has been wanting to go to a Casby Delegate Assembly, we have a hand up. Are you going to be around?
I will be.
Okay. So do you want to check in with Kathy, and then if she is going to be the delegate, would we take action on that? Do we have to take action on that the next, on September 10th? Or are we just doing nod aheads? What do we do last year?
I think they do. I think you formally voted on it last year.
We formally voted on it, okay.
We put on the sand if you want.
Okay. That sounds good. All right. And what else have we got?
Are we voting on this?
No, we're going to do it on September 10th.
Okay. Because it's under action.
Oh, is this really an action item? This wasn't an action item, was it?
I think the action part was that you wanted to submit.
Okay.
Resolutions or not submit resolutions?
Do we need to, do I need to make a motion to submit resolutions?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to submit resolutions to Casby as stated, for four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kitty and Laura, could you call the roll? I'm sorry, does anyone have discussion or comments? All right.
Benford and Fuqua are both absent. Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So our next item is nine, which is a, a policy action, 9.1 Regulation LBDER, LBD hyphen R, Relations with District Charter Schools Procedures for Establishment Review Renewal Revocation and Closure. So this is a regulation that the, that Rob has spent a lot of time and staff working with the National Association of Charter School Authorizers and also consulting with the Charter School Institute and the League of Charter Schools to come up with a best practice application process so that, you know, last year we just experienced a lot of, it was a very difficult application process for a lot of reasons. And one way we thought we could come up with a better process was to clarify and tighten up our application process in this, and to clarify some of the policies that are important to our community. And then the other piece is that generally with regulations, we don't take action on them. The only thing that's required in our policy is that the regulation come to the board, and if we have a question, we can bring it up for action, but we generally don't. In this case, staff has asked us to take action tonight because we're going to waive our policy that the regulation would go into effect in 30 days. Instead, this policy regulation will go into effect upon voting. So that's how this, this is why we're doing this, if you've been following the whole regulation versus non-regulation policy standard. So with that, Rob, do you want to add anything?
No, I think you covered it really well.
Okay, thanks. So board members, any questions? Or I know you all had a chance to look at this, and we got feedback from the DAC, and that's all incorporated into here, and really had some great charter minds working on this. So everyone ready to call the roll on this?
Well, I move.
Yeah?
That we, what would the appropriate motion be? Waive the 30 days for implementation of Regulation LBDR?
Or how about move that, and the, that the regulation go into effect immediately?
And the regulation go into effect immediately.
I'll second that long motion.
Could I just make one comment or ask a question?
Yes.
That comes in a minute?
No, no.
No. Okay. The, the only issue I had with it, or I, I think it's, we've done excellent work. It, it looks good. I appreciated the work session. I, and I forgot to bring this up during work session, but the, the 12 hard copies just kind of bothered me for just, you know, the purpose of, we have all this availability of electronic copies, and I've just wondered if, if we could not make it 12 hard copies because that's a lot of pages. And I, but I'm okay, I just want to point out that 12 is a lot, and especially when we've got access to it electronically.
So I will make one response to that, and I don't think it's the first person who asked about this. So when Laura and I worked to collate the copies, because our board members needed hard copies, because it was impossible to put all the sections together.
Wow.
And it took Laura an extraordinary amount of time. And there's a huge environmental impact to 12 copies, but it turned out most board members wanted them. And it would have been easier for the charter applicant who is familiar with the structure to have put those together. So in this, and it's difficult, and, and we noticed that Adams 12 requires hard copies as well, and that would have been actually quite helpful last year. Laura, is that?
I agree with that.
Okay, yeah. So it, it is a funny thing, isn't it? And I, but I think that when I looked at the time Laura spent doing that and having to confirm and reconfirm, I felt like it would have been easier for the person with the closest knowledge to have made those copies, knowing that ultimately, I think that most of us asked for a hard copy, as it turned out, so.
And so does that, does that incur an expense on the part of who? The, the people submitting it?
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it is a slight expense. No, we could offer to cover it.
Okay. And so I just, I just ask, I understand, I don't want to put Laura to extra work, that was a lot. I was, in my mind, I was looking at it as bam, you print out 12, bam, 12 more. I didn't realize there was a lot of collating that was going on to make the sections go together. I just got my hard copy and I thought, yay.
Yeah. I thought yay too. I don't have to do it. Richard, did you have a comment?
Yeah. The, the application and evaluation standards that we looked at at the work session, I think that they're so detailed that I don't think copies should be even a consideration. I think that if they follow all the details on that, they should be okay.
But we still need the copies.
We still need to read the application.
You can read online. I mean, if they follow, if they follow that, if they follow the, if they follow this process here, it should be pretty complete.
Well, they, so they don't, they just have to answer the questions. It may be in a different format. And it may come in sections electronically that are not in the same document.
But the application process is the exact format that you want to see it.
I don't think that we can control that. But you're right, it, it, it should be.
I mean, if I was writing that application, this is a good guide, I don't think I'd negate from it.
And I agree, I mean, I do think this is how it should be done.
A good example is all of the documents that we're going to get to on the state standards, and yes, I could have printed all those out and collated them, but I, I scrolled through, and I, I can't say I read all of them. I know that some of them were 191 pages and others were 28. But yeah, I was just thinking of the paper impact, but I, I hear Laura's pain, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate the, the green aspect of that, but for me, my eyes get so tired reading a long document on a computer that it's much easier to get the hard copy and you can make notes on it, so.
I did make notes, but I used a PDF program, so. But I get it.
Okay.
Well, and we've had two charter applications, so we're really not talking about a huge impact. Well, and we've had two charter applications, so we're really not talking about a huge impact.
No, we're not. I'm just asking the cost and all of that of submitting them for those, for the different people, so, yeah.
Well, we'll have to look into the cost, because that is an issue.
Thank you.
All right. Laura, do you want to call the vote?
I shall.
Thank you.
Both Benford and Figuare are absent. Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, policy, number 10, Policy Study 10.1, Board Policy AC, Nondiscrimination, Equal Opportunity, ACR, ACE1, ACE2. And so notably, this is policy study, not the actual policy. So Rob or Kathleen, do you want to walk us through?
I'll turn the floor over to Kathleen.
Okay. So this has been a, quite a process to try and make sure that we are bringing our policies current, both with the legal requirements and acknowledging the very real work implications that they have for our staff and for our community. So we undertook an overhaul of the AC policy to make sure, honestly, that it really provides for a careful and thorough investigation at the lowest level at which would be appropriate. So when we think about our students and we think about making sure that our learning communities are free of racial harassment, sexual harassment, and any sort of discrimination or harassment on the basis of a protected class, we need to make sure that we are empowering our school leaders to get that done efficiently. It doesn't need to bounce all the way up to the superintendent's office for a deep formal review unless an initial review has not remedied that problem. So really, the intent behind this overhaul was to make sure that we carefully built in the building level work that is being done, and then made a careful connection to the formal complaint process, which this board has had some experience with in the last year. So we're really, really clear, what does the form look like we're submitting? Who looks at it first? What are the relevant standards? And how do we want our community, students and employees, to work through? So the first, I presented four related items, because I think we really need to look at them together to make sense of them. So AC as our first high-level policy that needs to state what this board's expectations are for our learning communities. So most of this was existing language. We're updating it. I am encouraging the board to update the policy objectives that are stated for you on page one and two of Policy AC. That really was the main update to this. I unfortunately have to admit, and it pains me to do so, that I have an error in this draft on page three of Policy AC. The paragraph that's all caps that talks about designating a compliance officer, that now sits in AC-R. That should not have been in there, so I really apologize. And thank Dr. Anderson for giving me a heads up that I had this error when he reviewed it. So that's what I would say about AC. Would you like me to proceed then and talk about the recommendations for the regulation? Okay. So the good news is, we had a lot of really important content already reflected in our complaint and compliance process. So primarily, what has been done here is to make sure that our definitions are current, the terms that we're using are consistent so that we don't confuse people who are trying to follow this process. And then, as I said, that we have a building-level investigation procedure. So that's what starts on page, the very bottom of page two of this red line draft, and then proceeds on page three and half of page four. So this procedure, and really Title IX, our federal statute that requires that we have an environment free of harassment on the basis of sex and gender. Really, that emphasis is looking at these allegations of unwanted sexual conduct. So we've, I've built this regulation to be clear about what that process looks like at the building level. So we want to make sure that these complaints are brought forward right away to whomever that student might trust at the building level. And then we give our principals and their administrative teams very clear direction as to what we expect them to do once they receive them. So this regulation now includes timelines and specific decisions or investigatory pieces that need to be accomplished along the way. This is work that your school leaders are doing. When a student comes forward and says, "I'm experiencing something at school that is making it hard for me to learn," we expect our principals and administrators to investigate. But this gives them clarity in how to go about doing that work. There are a few cleanup issues in the writing of this red line. I would like to thank Ms. Sargent for her very careful and thorough edit. So there are already recommendations that I will take back and clean up in the next draft that comes forward. One that I think, I'm embarrassed to say I didn't think of myself, is I don't think we need to use gendered pronouns in our nondiscrimination policy. So we will replace all the he's and she's with they's so that it, the policy itself is in a microaggression against people who might not see themselves squarely fitting. And then there are some issues with commas that I'm going to study strunk in white and confer with our director of communications and make some specific decisions and write a policy style guide so that we can be consistent as we go forward. Yes, yes, and it was, it's great. I'm glad you're not my judge on some things right now. So those were those cleanup items to this regulation. We also did, in addition to updating the law, we've watched the federal agencies go through and review the policies of some of our colleagues. And they've required things like making sure that we've got the, not just the fax line for our civil rights agencies, but websites and other more current electronic references. So that's some of what you see on the final section of AC-R. Then there are also two exhibits that we bring forward as part of this overhaul. In a district of this size, nobody has their superintendent as the compliance officer. It's just not possible with the amount and the volume that there is to be done. I think to ask the superintendent to carry that load, the compliance officer's responsibilities are really mainly assuring that staff and our community are trained on the policies to provide support and guidance to administrators who are working through those. And then to serve in a role to, if there's unsatisfactory resolution at the building level, to make sure that there's a formal process that's done. So I had some free hours, so I plugged myself in there. But that's more typical with larger districts. We're starting to see some movement in larger districts candidly to designate a compliance officer who's also an attorney. We're not quite like DPS, we don't have eight lawyers on staff. So I don't think we're there yet to give someone a specific title, but it is something that we see happening in the field. And then the final piece, this was an existing exhibit, AC-E-6, in support of our students who are transgender, and reflecting some of the legislation that I brought to the board at our last meeting. It's much easier, we don't require proof of surgery to make adjustments to student records to match their gender identity. So in this form, we've just brought it current with some of the language, and then made sure we're not giving legal advice to our community and just encouraging them to look at some other community resources.
Okay, I have a quick question. So if a parent comes to me or a student comes to me with something that is a discrimination issue, is this the best policy for them to read for the first time? Is this where they start?
For the family and for educators? Yes.
Okay, so this is the, so some of our policies are for, some are for parents and some are for educators. This is for everybody?
Right. The purpose of having a really broad nondiscrimination policy is to give people one place to look. This board is on a five-year plan to review and look at all your policies, and I'm excited about that, because if we look at our book right now, were we to print it out? It is huge. It's like an old-school White Pages for Manhattan. It's really, really deep. So I think it's important that if someone is coming with a concern about discrimination or harassment, they find one place. And it's clear. So that's what we're attempting to do, is to bring all of it under this policy so that it is the first place and it has the definitions and very clear guidance about where they should go next.
Okay, and if a parent has a question about the policy, should they assume that they also call you?
They certainly could. What we really hope happens, because this is a commitment to equity as a district, our principals and administrators are well-versed in this and will be even more well-versed as we roll out training and supportive policy advancement. So I believe that it's our expectation as a district that any of our principals or administrators would be able to have an informed conversation with a family about what discrimination or harassment looks like at school and how we should go about remedying it.
Okay, and have we ever thought about creating a more oral or visual representation of this policy, such as a video that a parent could click on in two languages?
I think Randy was just struck by that thought now. But I do think that what we're talking about is access. And unfortunately, when we've got the number of laws that this policy has to deliver on, and you can see it's a really long list at the end of AC, all these federal rights laws, it can get a little overwhelming.
That's what I was kind of getting at.
And it's certainly a little dense.
Yeah.
So we could, we could, in support of the implementation of this policy, develop materials that created more access for people who aren't attorneys.
And maybe just giving people a starting point?
Yes.
So if you're feeling X, Y, or Z, this is the place where you might want to start connecting and figuring out how you're gonna resolve this.
Yes.
So I will say that myself and HR have had some conversations with regards to what that might look like. In my previous school district, they had videos that they were able to purchase that were for that use for staff at least. But it's definitely something that we started a conversation on.
And were your policies in Spanish?
Uh, no. And I'm talking about a video, video opportunity.
I'm talking with the policies.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Would you have some policies in Spanish? That's actually something else that we were talking about today, in effort to try to get all of them into Spanish over time. Not a long time, hopefully.
And I think this would be a good one to begin with. At this school level, we're already looking at these issues. They're under the umbrella of Title IX when we look at issues of sexual harassment or discrimination based on gender. And that is a conversation we've already had. It's a one-page rights. There's no reason that that document can't be readily translated. And then if we can connect our families to the Office for Civil Rights, their materials are very well-translated and available in multiple languages.
And, well, this is in our student handbook. We talk about our nondiscrimination policy and all the handbooks that the kids get. Will those handbooks need to be updated? But I think it's addressed in a shorter way, right?
Quite honestly, I have not had the opportunity to review our student handbook, but I'm really looking forward to a chance to do so.
They do get updated annually based on changes that are made by staff?
Right, because I'm not making it up. We have a student handbook, right?
We absolutely do. And I think connecting to the strategic plan as we look at the student code of conduct,
Right.
this is an essential element of it. We define the prohibited conduct. And sometimes our children, they don't know that what they're doing constitutes discrimination or harassment. And we need to be able to make sure that we're able to articulate it and explain it.
I really like your thorough explanation. We had a previous student from Fairview that has been on me, I won't use my Texas phrase on that one, like flies. Anyway, but she, I love her, because she got on it right away just a week before school started and said, "Donna, we've met for coffee, remember me?" And wrote us a long letter and said, "What is the district doing about the sexual harassment?" And it's good, because she's keeping up with these meetings and watching them, and she gets to hear the detailed explanation. The other comment I wanted to make is, it looks like, and I appreciate Tina saying, "Where do we direct people?" And would this be the starting point? Because it looks like there was a lot of merging and words that were folded from Policy GA, I guess, into this document directly. And then the other comment, the last, I want to make is, I do appreciate you explaining the compliance officer issue, because some people went directly in kind of reviewing this and said, "What the heck." And saw this one, and I said, "I'll bring it up." But you explained that you are someone, other than Rob, will be the compliance officer, so it won't be that the superintendent, if he's responsible for the infraction, would be appointing his own compliance officer. So that, you made that so clear. That was the question I was going to ask. So thank you.
Okay, I have, I think, three questions. So speaking of compliance officer, is there a pre-designated alternate compliance officer? Or is that just done at the time? Because it said, like, it would be you if you were unable to act or if you were the one accused of harassing. Is, so is there a predetermined, you know, second-string compliance officer?
We don't have a Plan B. I think in that circumstance, the superintendent would be asked to consider the issue that's being presented and designate the correct person.
Okay, and then, under, in the AC-R, on the definitions number two, the implication is that, no, I'm sorry, number four, is that a community member could be either the harasser or the victim. And I'm just interested in how that is a district problem if it's a community member. I mean, if the, yeah, say it's one community member against another one. How does that fit in?
Right, and I appreciate the comment. I did start to look at that, because I think you might have given me a little bit of feedback about it. So that-
Yeah, I asked the question.
That language follows language that was in the existing board policy. So if you go back to AC, the umbrella policy, and the first full paragraph that's in all-black font, the very last sentence, and this is unique to Boulder, and this is in your existing policy, it says, "In addition, the board prohibits discrimination and harassment against all members of the school community," and then defines that in the parentheses, "students, employees, and members of the public on the basis of physical characteristics."
So, but how would that work?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how that would work. But I think that what I would recommend is that I take that feedback back and I look at the regulations that some of our other districts have and review again the federal statutory requirements to make sure I'm not missing something. And then I can come back with a more complete response for you at our next meeting.
Thank you. And there's one place in ACR where it says that we encourage people to report as soon as possible. And then it says the person shall report as soon as possible. So it seems to contradict itself. And I don't know exactly where that is in there. I should have made note of that.
Well, and I will make a specific note so that I can do a word search when I'm working through these documents electronically. And I wonder if that wasn't just an artful phrase that I left in this draft. It's hard when we're thinking about this building-level investigation that we need to have happen immediately. But then there's also the formal process where you need to file the complaint. So I'll find that language and make sure that we're being consistent when we talk about how and when and where to submit those complaints.
Right, because the other thing that came up for me when I read that they shall is for people who, for any number of reasons, might be reluctant to report it. So we don't want to say you can't report this after or- So we don't want to say you can't report this after a certain amount of time.
Right, and I think it's particularly important where we're looking at the language and the person coming forward is the aggrieved individual. The place where I'd want to make sure we leave language that's mandatory is if we're talking about staff and employees who are observing discrimination or harassment. Then I think it makes sense for us to have that mandate. But I, I appreciate your point about recognizing that victims don't always feel comfortable coming forward immediately.
Thank you. That was my, that was it?
Okay, for sure.
I just have a quick question on A.C.R. eight-two-seven-two-zero-one, I guess. On page seven of seven.
There's also a page eight of seven.
Yes.
Where you have, "A hearing officer will be an administrative employee of the district." Or other person designated by, and you scratched off superintendent, and you wrote in district.
Right. One of the reasons I did that is when we look, one of the particular federal laws that requires a hearing is really Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. So it applies specifically to individuals with disabilities. In that circumstance, I wondered if it might be a district, it might be our Special Education Department, who would have some role in that. So that was my thinking in recommending that change.
Someone in the district in terms of where it applies to.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else? Again, this is on study, so will this come back to us on study or for action, do you think?
I think that it would be wonderful if we could take it up on action. I actually had really hoped to have this to you earlier so that this change could be in effect this whole school year. We did make sure that as we welcomed administrators back, that we covered the fact that we were proposing this change so that they would be aware and we can roll out some additional training. So I would say the sooner the better. If the board is comfortable that the changes that we're looking for are not huge, then I think that we can present you with a revised, corrected red line and be ready for action in September.
Okay, so we can shoot for that, and maybe we'll send an email reminder because we have two board members absent, just updating them on the conversation so that they can provide any additional feedback. Okay, so our last item is a study item, eleven-point-one Colorado State Standards 2020.
Hello again. So hopefully the projection system will comply with my wishes a little bit better this time. So, 2020 academic standards, as I mentioned in the earlier presentation about the strategic plan, our, our strat plan calls out for us to create a standards-based scope and sequence for pre-K-12 as part of our Phase One initiatives. Now, simultaneously, we're at that point where the state has been revising its academic standards and has the new 2020 Colorado Academic Standards adopted by the State Board of Education with a requirement that districts adopt the standards that meet or exceed these in time for implementation in the 2020, 2021 school year. So just a, a quick look at the new standards, the revised Colorado Academic Standards, and how they differ from previous versions. One of the first is that there's just a change in the language. So the, the highest level of statement about what students are expected to learn and be able to do by the time they finish their educational experience with us are what are called prepared graduate statements. It used to say prepared graduate competencies, but the state felt that statements was a better word that competencies tends to be confused with a description of a level of mastery. This was really meant to be very broad statements. There's also been the addition of a, a new section in the standards called Academic Context and Connections. I'll show you an example of this in a minute. But that provides a little bit more context for the content that's being presented in that particular standard. Standards now exist for computer science, so that's a big one. These are new at the state level, and staff is recommending that as a district, we do adopt the Colorado Academic Standards for Computer Science along with the other content areas. And the preschool standards have been revised to align with Colorado's early learning and development guidelines. So this is a sample page from the new Colorado Academic Standards. You'll see that they're laid out very similarly to the previous version with the prepared graduate statements at the top, and then the grade-level expectations, which really lay out key concepts or skills that are to be developed at that grade level. And then some evidence outcomes that describe what students really should be able to do or understand relative to that grade-level expectation. And then this new section, the Academic Context and Connections, really provides examples of how students might apply higher-level thinking skills or transfer their learning and apply it to real-world situations. And in this case, statements like construct an argument with evidence data and/or a model, which is a broad, higher-order thinking skill that's applied across science in multiple disciplines. So here's our, our timeline of where we intend to go with the standards prioritization process and creation of a scope and sequence. The first step in that is the adoption of the 2020 Colorado Academic Standards, which will allow us to move forward, which, with the next step in the process, which is to do the prioritization of those standards. So why do we need to prioritize the standards and who needs to be involved in that process? We counted the total number of evidence outcomes for fourth-grade classroom teachers across all of the content areas, and it totals 174. That's a lot of evidence outcomes. That's, that's, you know, close to like one per day of instructional time with fourth-grade students. And they're pretty meaty statements, so I'm just going to share one with you. This is for science, fourth grade. Use a model to describe that animals receive different types of information through their senses, process the information in their brain, and respond to the information in different ways. So it, it's a pretty substantial evidence outcome in terms of what students are required to be able to do. You can imagine that with 174 evidence outcomes, that a fourth-grade teacher may not get to all of them with the level of depth that really ensures that students master them. And I think we just have to accept that that's a reality for our classroom teachers. And so what happens is that each individual teacher is prioritizing, right? And deciding which ones of those evidence outcomes are most critical for students to understand so that that teacher ensures that the instruction covers that. What we propose is that that prioritization should happen at the district level because that ensures consistency of the experience across classrooms. So who needs to be involved in that process? Teachers are a very critical voice in this process. They're the ones that are closest to the instruction and the reality of the classroom. And we very much imagine this process being a collective effort in collaboration with our teachers. We'll also want to leverage our content experts on our network support teams. Our teams for strategic initiatives, 1A, 1B, and 6A, I think will all play a critical role in this. Just as a reminder, 1B is about instructional practices, and 6A was about defining culturally responsive best practices. We also believe that community input is really important and valuable to this process. And as required by state legislation, there will be a public forum during the 2019-2020 school year to seek input from our community on our civics and history curriculum. So once we've got those standards prioritized, we'll be, begin the creation of a detailed scope and sequence. So taking those prioritized standards and determining what order they should go in. So why is that part important? We feel like this is critical for creating the equitable learning experiences that all students deserve in our district. Our research consistently shows that a common scope and sequence across teachers in a district is an essential component of the district conditions that lead to closing achievement gaps through providing that consistency and coherence. It also guarantees a level of depth at which we cover the standards. In prioritizing standards and creating scope and sequence, we're ensuring that students are really engaging at a high level and developing the essential skills as they, as they go through the course of that school year. It's also critical having a, a sequence to the standards in developing a balanced assessment system. So the reality is, we do have a scope and sequence, but the sequence is defined at the level of an entire school year. We say that this whole list of stuff needs to be covered in one school year. And we, we haven't said anything up to this point about the order in which those need to happen. And therefore, when we create a common assessment, it, we have to default to doing that assessment at the end of the year because that's the only time in the school year where everyone has had an opportunity to instruct on all of those evidence outcomes. If we can refine that a little bit, not go to a scripted day-by-day, but perhaps an order at the level of a unit or quarters or trimesters, then that'll give us the opportunity to develop, to develop common assessments that can be used formatively, which will be much more valuable to our teachers in the process of informing instruction. So questions?
Thank you so much. Any questions? Kathy?
I just had a question based on what you just said. Is it, are there going to be the uncommon formative assessments across the district for every grade and subject matter? Or do the teachers get to do their own formative assessments?
I would say yes and. So yes, there will be common formative assessments. That is yet to be determined exactly how that'll play out because that's one of the strategic initiatives that's, that's going to happen in Phase Two, this design of the balanced assessment system. I don't think it'll be in every content area, in every grade level. I thi, I think that we'll more than likely need to be selective about those areas where we provide district common assessments. But there's absolutely a role for teacher-created common assessments at the building level as well.
Other questions?
So the prioritization, I like the idea at the district level, but how soon does that happen in, in this plan?
Yeah, we, we will be done with that by the end of this academic year. So the team right now is working on criteria for that prioritization and a process that we can begin training teams on and starting to engage them in that work.
And I just wanted to thank you for scheduling in the forum that would provide a public, an opportunity for the public to weigh in on how we teach the civics and social studies with our different populations, including our minority populations, so. That's a, that was a big piece of legislation that passed last year.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. I don't think she has a date yet.
We have not set a date. It will be this school year. It will be this school year. It'll be before we finish the prioritization. I think it's actually an important thing for us to include during the prioritization process. That's the appropriate place in the sequence of events to create the scope and sequence because that, that'll help us outline those evidence outcomes that we're going to guarantee and place high priority on at each grade level.
All right.
What kind of textbook and hard kind, I mean textbooks are dating myself, that are, are implied in adopting these standards? Because like I look at the part of what we have to do in social studies now is have a more inclusive LGBTQ history. And I know in California, they actually changed their textbooks to reflect that. And maybe, I mean, so what kinds of issues are embedded in changing and updating our standards?
I'm going to defer to Dr. Anderson on this.
I will, I'll say first and foremost, as we, as we enter this next budget cycle, we have to pay close attention to how much we're investing in our instructional materials and high-quality curriculum. And I think that you'll see that becoming as a priority as we think about prioritizing standards. I would say the difference between California and Colorado is when California changes their standards, textbook companies then change their textbooks to reflect the California standards. And if you're in California, or if you're in Texas, or if you're in Florida, you get to buy books that are fully aligned to your standards. And if you're in Colorado and other states, that, that, it doesn't work that way because that's not how textbook companies work. But I just wanted to add that in in regards to, you know, we have under-invested in instructional materials in this district, and we have pushed this off to the point where I heard a nightmare story a couple weeks ago that we have books that still have Clinton as president.
Oh, my gosh.
Right?
Those are current by some say.
So I, I, I say that to say that I think that as we think about the investments that we're going to want to make, that having high-quality curriculum and high-quality instructional materials is paramount for our teachers. I mean, if we want to put our teachers in the best positions possible to make a difference, close gaps, make sure every kid gets a high-quality education and is maximizing their full potential, that we need to make sure that we're doing that. So I don't know if you had anything else to add, Sam, but?
I don't. So TBD.
You took all that and they're saying TBD.
As we go forward, we're going to have to figure it out.
All right. Sounds good. This is great. Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, so our last item is agenda setting. What?
My request?
I'm, Kitty's request, okay. And I'm going to need help, Kathy and Laura. So Kitty has reached her limit of meetings that she can call into for this calendar year due to a personal issue. And I would like to make a motion that we allow her to call in for at least three more times.
I may not be necessary.
And it may not be necessary, but this is to deal with an issue that she's had. And can I do it that way?
Can you make a motion to allow this board member?
Yes.
Doesn't she need to make a motion to amend the agenda first?
Yes.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Do you want to make that? You can do that one.
Yeah, I move we amend the agenda to include Tina's motion to allow me to call into up to three more meetings.
Okay, I second it. Okay, and now do I make a motion?
No, we have to vote on it.
Oh, we have to vote on that, okay. Any discussion or questions?
Okay, who's seconding the motion?
Tina.
Tina? Okay, the motion is to amend the agenda to allow an item to be posted, allowing Kitty to call in for up to three more meetings. I will take the rule. Benford and Fuqua are both absent. Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now do I make the motion?
Yes.
I move that Kitty Sargent be able to call in three more times for the calendar year.
I don't think I can second it.
Nope. Richard seconds it.
Does Kitty need to abstain from voting, or can she vote?
It's not a technical requirement that she abstain because she won't be making any money as a result of the decision.
I will abstain anyway, just to be perfectly dispassionate.
Okay.
Okay, Benford and Fuqua are both absent. Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Whoops.
Yes.
And Sargent?
I abstain.
Okay. Motion passes.
All right, Kitty, thank you.
Thank you.
I wish you didn't have to call in. So then the last item is agenda setting. So we attached our agenda. Anything, board members? All right, there's so much going on, it's hard to imagine adding right now. All right, so with that, the meeting is adjourned.